Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us at the South Gate Planning Commission meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to vote. And I will be calling this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Commissioner Vice Chair Prieto, can you lead us in the flexible?
Please stand.
Thanks. Now, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner.
Present. 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 Present.
I have Yerba Raza, Special Projects Coordinator certified that a true and correct copy of the foregoing meeting agenda was properly posted on October 30, 2025, 72 hours prior to the scheduled meeting as required by law. Pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure or compensation for meeting attendance by the Planning Commission is $125 per meeting.
Thank you. Seeing there are no items on the consent calendar and no items on the public hearings, onto item number nine, open session items.
Thank you, Chair. We have one item. It's a workshop on the California Environmental Quality Act, and we have Associate Planner Valdez here to give that presentation. We also have a PowerPoint presentation that will be on the screen pretty soon, but I will turn it over to Associate Planner Valdez for his presentation. And afterwards, if you have any questions, feel free to ask staff of any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will start the presentation by prefacing that the PowerPoint has changed since the one that you guys were emailed, so you will notice that difference in today's presentation. With that said, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joshua Valdez, Associate Planner for the City of South Gate Planning Division. I'm here to present today's workshop on California Environmental Quality Act. This is a brief overview of today's topics that I will be discussing in today's, well, of the topics I'll be discussing in today's workshop. We will start with outlining the purpose and intent of this workshop, followed by an overview of SEQA's history, applicability, recent changes, and provide examples of a variety of SEQA projects you may encounter. Then we'll discuss environmental impact reports, EIRs, including the process and procedures of preparing an EIR and the role and responsibility of a lead agency. The purpose and intent of this workshop is to increase our understanding and awareness of SEQA, equipping participants with the knowledge needed to understand SEQA's key principles and the role it plays in the land use planning process. This workshop's intent is also to develop the skills and tools needed to navigate the SEQA process, enhance decision-making, and promote transparency and collaboration between all stakeholders. I will start the workshop with a brief review of SEQA. I will then define SEQA and touch on its history and discuss what SEQA is and is not, and when SEQA applies to a project. I'll also touch on some recent changes made to the SEQA statute, followed by some examples of local activities in the City of South Gate that would be subject to SEQA review and the levels of environmental documents that may result. So, SEQA stands for California Environmental Quality Act, which refers to a body of legislation that institutes a statewide policy for environmental protection and compliance. SEQA was enacted by the state legislator in the 1970s, following the United States Congress adoption of the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA. NIPA applies to activities undertaken by federal agencies, while SEQA applies to activities undertaken by California state agencies. Both SEQA and NIPA were established based on growing public concerns in the 1960s about environmental conditions. SEQA is intended to create a public process and informed decision-makers and the public of the potential environmental effects of a proposed activity. Since its original enactment in 1970s, SEQA has evolved over the last 50-plus years through direct changes to the legislature and is shaped by case law. In June 2025, Governor Newsom signed into a law, Assembly Bill 130 and Senate Bill 131. Reforming the California Environmental Quality Act, these reforms were aimed at expediting housing production and infrastructure development throughout the state. These amendments created a new statutory SEQA exemption for qualifying urban infill housing projects, streamlining the approval process by reducing permitting timelines and limiting opportunities for litigation. The reforms also included additional SEQA exemptions for a range of projects, including certain type of infrastructure and community facilities. These changes represented significant policy shift away from more extensive SEQA review for certain projects with the intent of facilitating faster project approval, particularly in urban infill areas. In 2018, SEQA underwent a comprehensive update to its implementing guidelines. Notably, the update incorporated amendments mandated by Senate Bill 743, transitioning the primary metric of transportation impact analysis from the traditional measure of traffic congestion, which is Levels of Service, or LOS, to Vehicle Miles Travel, VMT. This shift was intended to align SEQA's review with state goals of promoting sustainable land use patterns and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The updated guidelines also provide enhanced direction for the analysis of climate change impacts, including assessing a project's contribution to greenhouse gas emissions. The overall amendment clarified the SEQA process by incorporating recent legislative changes and relevant court decisions, adding detail to existing exemptions and refining the environmental checklist used for initial studies. In addition to the substantive changes made to the statute, there have been several procedural changes that have occurred in the past few years relating to posting, communicating, noticing, and filing requirements. As of January 1st, 2024, SEQA requires that notice of determinations, NODs, and notice of exemptions, NOEs, must be filed with the county clerk and posted to the state's clearinghouse. This intent is to enhance transparency in the SEQA notification process. So, what is SEQA? SEQA is a law enacted with the goal of protecting the environment to the greatest extent possible from harm caused by development projects. SEQA is an environmental tool used to identify environmental impacts and mitigate measures to reduce or eliminate those impacts. SEQA provides a framework for decision-making bodies such as the City of South Gate, City Council, and Planning Commission to weigh the environmental consequences of a project with its benefits prior to deciding to approve, conditionally approve, or deny a project. SEQA is also an opportunity for public participation, as discussed later in this presentation. SEQA provides several opportunities for members of the public organizations and agencies to comment on projects and their potential environmental impacts. SEQA is in a way to automatically stop projects from being approved. As previously mentioned, SEQA informs decision-making but does not have the power to approve or deny a land use development proposal. Similarly, SEQA is also not a standalone approval process, meaning approval, adoption, or certification of a SEQA document does not necessarily mean that a project will be approved. While SEQA requires mitigation measures that minimize or reduce environmental impacts to the greatest degree possible, SEQA does not guarantee that no changes to the environment will occur. Lastly, it is not intended to be an obstacle to development. Though SEQA may add time and complexity to projects, it is not the intention to unnecessarily slow or stop development. Rather, SEQA seeks to achieve responsibility and sustainable development through informed decision-making, identification of mitigation measures, and public participation. So, when is it applicable? SEQA applies to all projects that meet the SEQA definition of a project. A project under SEQA is defined as an activity that may cause either a direct physical change in the environment or a reasonable foreseeable change. Under SEQA, a project is an activity directly undertaken by a public agency. For example, the City of South Gate installing new sidewalks, carrying out improvements to public parks, or constructing a new fire station would qualify as a project. Another example of a SEQA project would be the adoption of an update to the general plan, such as the housing element. A project is further defined as an activity that is supported by grants or loans. For instance, the allocation of funds to construct an affordable housing project or to purchase new equipment like a fire engine. A project is also an activity that involves the issuance of a lease, permit, a license, a certificate, or an entitlement such as a conditional use permit issued by the city or by our beautiful Commissioners. Once an activity is determined to meet the SEQA definition of a project, the lead agency is then tasked with reviewing the project under SEQA. The lead agency starts by determining whether a streamlining provision or exemption may apply. As shown on the left-hand side of the slide, streamlining provisions are included in Article 12 of the SEQA guidelines, and exemptions are provided in Articles 18 and 19. Both streamlining and exemptions have been established to increase efficiency and to avoid the preparation of repetitive environmental analysis. One example of streamlining provisions under SEQA is for affordable housing projects that provide housing for low-income households. To qualify for this streamlining, this type of project would have to meet several criteria, such as being located on a site that is less than 10 acres, I mean, less than five acres, apologies, and within an incorporated city of a certain density and population. If a city meets all streamlining provisions, no further analysis under SEQA is required. SEQA also provides several statutory and categorical exemptions. Statutory exemptions are granted by the state legislator and apply regardless of the environmental impacts of a project. Whereas categorical exemptions are classes of projects that have been determined by the state to be those that do not typically have substantial impacts on the environment, the primary difference between statutory and categorical exemption is that statutory exemptions are absolute, meaning that if a project qualifies for a statutory exemption, SEQA is absolutely not required. On the other hand, categorical exemptions are subject to various exemptions, such as if the project will result in an adverse impact on a historic resource. In the case of categorical exemption, if statutory exemptions include the preparation and adoption of, examples of statutory exemptions would include the preparation and adoption of an urban water waste management plan, the operation of a family daycare, and Olympic Games. A common example of categorical exemption is the expansion of an existing single-family home, as this would qualify under a category exemption for existing facilities. If a project does not qualify for streamlined review or exemption from SEQA, the lead agency can prepare an initial study to determine the level of review needed. The initial study may conclude that an addendum to the previously prepared EIR is appropriate if the proposed project will not result in new or more severe environmental impacts. The initial study may also conclude that a project will have no impacts and that a negative declaration would be prepared. If a project may have impacts, but mitigation measures would reduce those impacts, a mitigated negative declaration would be prepared. Lastly, if the initial study concludes that the project will have significant impacts on the environment, an environmental impact analysis, EIR, would be prepared. With that said, let's unpack the substantive and procedural requirements for an EIR by touching on required processes and procedures and the roles and responsibilities of the lead agency. The process to initiate an EIR begins once a project is sufficiently defined, be it through the submittal of a development review application to the city or city-led effort. If the project has the potential to result in potentially significant impacts, then a determination is made for an EIR to be prepared. An initial study may be prepared as part of the EIR process but is not required. The EIR process formally kicks off through the publication of a notice of preparation or NOP. The NOP provides notice to the community, stakeholders, and agencies that the city is preparing an EIR, and it opens a 30-day public comment period on the scope of topics and issues of concern to be addressed in the EIR document. During the 30-day comment period on the NOP, a scoping meeting may be held to receive oral comments. The next step is to prepare the draft EIR, which can take up to several months to years, depending on the nature of the project and other factors. Once the draft EIR is available for review, a notice of availability is circulated to all interested parties and is posted publicly, and it opens a 45-day public comment period on the contents of the EIR. Public meetings may be held to receive comments on the draft EIR but are not required. What is required is that all comments raised are to be taken into consideration and responded to as part of the final EIR. The final EIR addresses comments raised, provides clarification where needed, and provides any additional information. The final EIR must be made available to all public agencies that have commented on the draft EIR and at least 10 days prior to its consideration for certification. If the city decides, decision-making body determines that the EIR is adequate, SEQA findings are made, and if necessary, a statement of overriding consideration is adopted, and the EIR is certified. A key part of the EIR process is public comment and participation. There are multiple opportunities afforded to committee members to provide both written and oral comments. When the city decides to prepare an EIR, the notice of preparation, NOP, is released, which allows for a 30-day public comment period, and typically scoping meetings intended to inform the scope of topics to be covered. Then, once the draft EIR is published, a 45-day comment period commences. The EIR comment period are not the times to express support or opposition to the project, but rather are to identify any concerns with the analysis contained within the environmental document. Additional public comments can be made during public hearings on the project, other community outreach efforts, neighborhood meetings, work, wait, other opportunities for public input may be provided through informal meetings like community outreach efforts, neighborhood meetings, workshops, and study sessions. The role of the public in the EIR process is to provide input to decision-makers on the environmental considerations and concerns during the public review and comment periods. The role of the decision-maker is to ensure that the SEQA lead agency obligations have been fulfilled. SEQA defines lead agencies as the public agency with the principal responsibility for carrying out or approving projects. For activities within city limits, the City of South Gate would be the lead agency. Lead agency responsibilities include ensuring substantive and procedural requirements of SEQA are met, that environmental concerns raised by the public and stakeholders are adequately addressed in the SEQA analysis, and to navigate the balance between environmental protection and community goals and priorities. The lead agency may also have, may have the principal authority on a project activity, but other state activities may also have permitted authority or other obligations. Here are a couple of additional resources that you may be interested in if you would like more information about the SEQA process. The State Governor's Office of Planning and Resource provides environmental and land use planning resources, guidance, technical guidance and advisory, and hosts the SEQA Net Web Portal, which is a statewide database where local, regional, and state agencies post environmental documents and notices. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very thorough and quick. Do we have any public questions or comments on the presentation? No? How about from my colleagues? Jimmy?
Did we mention there's going to be a quiz?
Then I'm going to start asking questions. Quick question. Can you speak a little bit to the exemptions on when SEQA can, how that applies, and what liberty we have around that as a city?
So, there is a couple of different exemptions. Some that you may be familiar with for sure would be the existing facilities exemption. I believe that's a category 13, where, for instance, when I came in front of you for the Pan, that's on 9849 Atlantic Avenue, that's already a built-out shopping center, so there's no way of, by adding the activity of selling alcohol, that there's going to be an adverse impact to the environment if we were to allow that. Another example would be the addition to St. Helens that we did, 9329 Madison Avenue. We used another category exemption there for existing school facilities, so we didn't have to go through any of the SEQA findings. We used that exemption to go ahead and facilitate or streamline that project, as it fell within the parameters of that type of exemption, which was you could go up to, I believe, 15% of the existing, or 15% of the existing school facility, which they were below. There's other exemptions, but the point of the exemptions, the SEQA exemptions, are to not hold a project up during the environmental review process, which can be a significant time constraint. And so, what these exemptions do is basically say that there may be environmental impacts. However, the state has identified that the impacts that these types of projects would generate are not, do not trigger a significant threshold to raise environmental concerns. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
I kind of had a follow-up to that, more specifically dealing with the recent changes to SEQA. I think you kind of briefly touched on them, and I understand that they had to do with helping expedite the development of multifamily residential housing so that the state can meet the goals it has set. How would you guys perceive that to affect South Gate? I know that we're already kind of going through the motions of expediting residential development. And more specifically, I'm thinking of like the Adela project, like would that kind of have changed anything in that, or?
Yeah, that's a good question. For the Adela project, we did a mitigated negative declaration for that, so it is a higher level of review. It wasn't a category exemption. I know we did some technical studies and we had it prepared for you. We have a couple of projects coming down the pipeline that yield residential development and also have our MNDs, mitigated negative declarations. So, we have our consultants working on that. Actually, there's another exemption in the Class 32, and Joshua sort of touched upon that. The Class 32 exemption deals with infill development, and projects are considered, you know, Class 32 exempt for certain criteria, one being that the property is less than five acres, you know, has to be in an urban area, there's no special, you know, general plan amendments or, you know, zoning amendments. It has to be consistent with the general plan and zoning code, and, you know, as long as it meets those criteria, then it falls under that Class 32 exemption. And the state really wants us to use, you know, exemptions in order to get through, get some of these projects through. The thing about the Class 32 is, it's sort of, the way I see it, it's sort of gone backwards because the state wants cities to use Class 32 exemptions and other exemptions in order to get these housing projects through, but the way it's gone is, a Class 32 exemption is almost like a negdeck, or even a mitigated negdeck at this point, where we have to prepare technical studies in order to justify that the project isn't going to have air quality or noise or traffic impacts. So, we have our consultants prepare technical studies to show that, you know, any impacts is going to be less than significant.
Yeah, that's because most of the exemptions are just exemption. If you fall into this category, it's exempt. The Class 32 says, if you fall into this category, you're exempt, as long as you can show this list of four things, which detracts from the automatic nature. And I think that the recent changes are probably going to have an effect not so much on the current projects that are in the city, but if they work the way they're supposed to, they will probably encourage more projects to come to the city because the goal was to, you know, entice low-income housing developers to build more housing with the promise that they will not have to endure the time-consuming and expensive SEQA process by creating the exemption. So, if it works the way Sacramento wants it to work, and of course, that always happens, you'll probably see a lot more, you know, development applications coming into the city.
And who's responsible for paying the cost of some of these studies, whether they be the proving the exemptions or when it heads on to the environmental impact report route?
That would be the applicant's responsibility. We have a fee schedule that was adopted by our city council, and in there it says that if we hire any consultants, the applicant is responsible for covering the fees for that consultant, plus a 25% administrative fee.
And the city determines who the consultants are, right?
Correct. And we established a list of bench consultants. Currently, we have three of them right now, the three environmental consultants that we reach out to. We'll send out the scope out to those three consultants. They'll put in a proposal to do the work, and we'll review that proposal and select one and go with that.
And all of these are, are they typically posted in the same area? I know that, you know, we received notice of a project that is starting to go through this process last week. Are they typically noticed within the same webpage on the city website?
Yeah, we do have a, we're preparing an environmental impact report right now. We just had the scoping meeting last week. That's the project you're referring to. And so, it's in the very early stages. As Joshua mentioned, the scoping meeting is at the early stages of the EIR process. And that one, we did send notices out to residents within 1,000 feet, and it was posted on our website. We had posted that on the, here in front of City Hall. It sort of mirrors what we have in our zoning code for public hearings. In our zoning code, there's a requirement there in terms of how you notice it for public hearings, and so, the noticing for the scoping meeting was sort of similar, the notice preparation. It sort of followed that. I guess it wasn't entirely held to the standards of our zoning code because it is separate, it's under SEQA, but we did try to make outreach to people within 1,000 feet, people that would be impacted by the project.
And what do, what limitations do we have as planning commissioners on participating within this process of the EIR and submitting comment, specifically because we are supposed to kind of come into these decisions with, you know, an unbiased opinion? So, how does that affect us?
You're kind of, you're, to some degree, I mean, it's a judicial proceeding, you're the judges, so you are supposed to remain impartial. As Joshua said, the whole EIR process is not intended to be a forum for saying, "I like this project" or "I dislike this project." It's really supposed to be focused on, you know, here are what we perceive to be the environmental impacts, and you can certainly comment on, you know, I don't think that the draft EIR focused on this or on that, and more importantly, you receive the comments that the public and the other agencies send and evaluate those, because ideally, when you create the final EIR, it will include, you know, it must include all those comments, and it should include your responses of the comments. So, you can agree with the comments, or you can, you know, disagree and provide reasons for it. So, it's, you get to weigh in, but you get to weigh in as a judge rather than as an advocate, so you're actually in the best position, I think.
And I've seen commissioners attend scoping meetings in the past. I think it is a public meeting. It's really just to solicit comments back from the public in terms of what should be included in the environmental document, and it is a public meeting, so anybody is welcome to attend. I would say just as a planning commissioner, because it will come before you at a future date, that you need to remain impartial in there, but you are welcome to attend any scoping meetings or any community meetings we have on projects, just to educate yourself and become more familiar on the project. The key is, I think, is really to keep the impartial and not, you know, give any indication of, in terms of, you know, if you're a supporter or not of the project.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions?
When are the scoping meetings? When do they take place?
They usually take place during the notice preparation process. There's a 30-day notice preparation that gets released. During that time is when we usually like to have the scoping meetings. I know that they can, you know, you know, sometimes you can have scoping or a notice of preparation period that extends, you know, 30 days, have a longer period of time, and then it can fall outside the 30 days, and, you know, but it's really just to kind of introduce the environmental portion of a project and then get feedback from the public, from any impacted parties on what should be included in the environmental document.
So, it's basically like preliminary information?
Yeah, it is preliminary. What happens is our consultants take the feedback they get from the public, and they'll, you know, if they're relevant to the project, they'll include that in the environmental document when they're preparing the EIR.
Thank you.
Can you speak a little bit more on the technical studies that are associated with SEQA? Can, can you speak a little bit more on the technical studies that, that are associated with CEQA?
Sure. There's typically, you know, you typically do the traffic. And then associated with the traffic is air quality and noise. So in order to do the air quality and noise, that sort of relies on the traffic. Because traffic usually generates a noise and, and, you know, odor or air quality issues. So those are three, that's, that's usually done. I know in other communities where they have concerns about wildlife or, you know, vegetation, usually a biology, biology study is usually prepared. Those are areas that are, you know, usually untouched, vacant. There might be an impact there if you disturb, you know, a sensitive habitat or habitation for a certain type of animal, you know, wildlife. Yeah, historic buildings sometimes are a concern.
Native Americans.
Yeah, Native American, that's, that's a, that's a good one. That's a new one, I said newer one also, where we need to have consultation with our Native American tribes in the area. So there's a Native American Heritage Commission, NHC, that we reach out to. And they would give us a list of possible impacted tribes in our city. And then we would reach out to them to see if they want to do consultation.
Do we typically not have any species of concern through the LA River? Or has that not been an issue? I don't know. I'm an environmental scientist, but not that kind.
It probably depends on where the project is. If the project is budding the river, then you, you certainly would. If it's, you know, deep in the heart of the city, far away from the, the river, then it's less likely that you'd need that. But that's all part of what the scoping meetings are about, is to determine the scope of the EIR. And you would get public input, you know, somebody might come and, and raise that and then they could discuss it. And if it looked like it was a legitimate or a potential environmental concern, then that would be included as part of what the things the EIR would study.
So does staff have discretion on what studies are performed based off of the project?
Yeah, I was going to add something to that. A lot of the technical studies are guided by, by staff sometimes. To give you an example, like if there was a lot of trees or shrubs on a property and you think there could be likely like birds that, that live there, right? And habitate there and maybe it's known that it might be endangered. So we, based on some of that evidence, just by seeing that, we might request like a biological study be done, right? Because that project may affect a project like that. You know, in our general plan, if it, we had maps to show like, hey, this area is sensitive to Native American artifacts, then we might request like a cultural or archaeological study be prepared and then we'll review it. And then just one of the things to add is that I think a lot of times planners are expected to be almost experts at all these topics, right? Like, and then sometimes maybe they might expect you, like noise or air quality biology. But we're not experts in, in these fields, right? So a lot of these studies are prepared by certified professionals that prepare this. And they make recommendations to the, the planning commission. Since sometimes we're not the experts in these topics, a lot of times we'll request that those experts that prepare these studies, when we know there will be questions about them, come to the public hearing so that they can, you can ask the questions of them, right? Because they, they are the experts. So, you know, you're not expected to be experts. Our, what we try to do is give you the findings to be able to consider a decision, you know, at the planning commission. But, but yeah, sometimes technical studies are prepared. A lot of times it's based on recommendations that we have. You know, for example, if, even if there's like contaminated sites, you know, there's hazard studies that could be prepared if we know that there's enough evidence that that's the case.
Any other questions? No, so?
Actually, a couple. In regards to the CEQA, so once it's identified that the CEQA is in order, how long before all the studies go into play? And how long does the applicant have to make sure that they start adhering to whatever needs to get done?
Yeah, that's a good question. One of the things that Joshua kind of mentioned, CEQA applies for discretionary projects, not ministerial projects. Ministerial being if it meets all the, the code requirements, say that like ADUs. ADUs are usually, they're, they're ministerial, ministerial projects done at the staff level. So CEQA doesn't apply to ministerial projects. They apply to discretionary projects, projects where you have to make a decision. You may have conditions of approval, it may be denied based on certain findings. At that point, staff would take a look at the project. They would look at the list of exemptions and see if one of the exemptions applies and, and use that. That would be the easy way out. If they, they know there's certain concerns or the project does have a, it's large enough to trigger a neg deck or mitigated neg deck, then we can start, you know, preparing initial study. And, you know, that, that takes, you know, reaching out to a consultant, you know, preparing that initial study for us. And then, you know, going that route.
And also I would add, it is not the developer who has to comply with CEQA. It's the city. It's, it's the lead agency. The time periods apply to the city there. There are notice periods that we have to comply with. There's timelines by which we have to, you know, complete the, the, the reports or the, or the negative declarations. So the, the, the point at which requirements are imposed on the applicant comes perhaps when you, at the stage when you want to issue a mitigated negative declaration, say yes, you can go forward as long as your project includes these mitigation measures. But it's, it's not, you, you, Mr. Developer have to comply with CEQA. It's us, the city has to comply with CEQA.
The developer would have to have a fee.
Developer pays for, the developer pays for it. And, and the developer, you know, assists with, I mean, we need to know what kind of a project the developer wants to build so that we can study the environmental impacts of that. So the, the developer is certainly involved in the, 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 the details of the project at the outset. But it is the city and its, and its consultants who, who do the work and evaluate the, the, you know, we don't, the developer doesn't get to tell us what the environmental impacts are. We have to determine what those are ourselves and determine whether they can be mitigated. And if so, we'll impose mitigation measures. And if not, make the decision as to whether despite the environmental impacts, the, the project brings such other benefits to the community that we should go forward with it, knowing that it's going to, you know, create traffic, like, you know, Azalea Shopping Center, probably increased the traffic in the neighborhood, but it, you know, created so many other offsetting benefits that the city decided that it was a, a good thing, a good project to proceed with.
So what would be the outcomes, then, the possible outcomes? You, you mentioned the negative declaration, that there's no, no unforeseen impacts. The mitigated declaration, that there is environmental concerns, but there will be.
But they can be mitigated. And if you don't have either of those, and if you don't have an exception, that means that you don't even have to look at CEQA. If you're not exempt, if you, if you can't issue a mitigated or a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration, that's the point when you say, let's perform an environmental analysis. Let's do a full blown EIR, which takes a lot of time and costs a lot of money. But it gives you the, the complete picture of, here's a project that is likely to have a significant environmental effect. Here are the effects. Here are project alternatives, which may result in, in fewer effects. And one of those could be no project at all. And, you know, here are mitigation measures you could impose to reduce it. And that gets bundled up into a nice thousand page report that you all get to evaluate and determine with, with the help of everybody here, you know, how to, how to, how to move forward, whether to, to approve the, the EIR, which is not the same thing as approving the project. It's, it's simply focused on the environmental stuff. But it's, it's a lot of work, which is why applicants, you know, try to, to find an exemption. And if not an exemption, hope for a, a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration. Because the alternative is, is, is a long but important process.
And for parties that are unsatisfied with whatever decision gets made, what is their, their next recourse?
If you were to, you know, fail to certify the, the EIR, they could appeal it to the, to, to the city council. And if the city council upheld your decision, then like most other things, they, their, their only alternative would be to file a lawsuit against the city.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And you might have already said this, you, little backup on selecting the consultants. The city does that. Do you know what it's based on or how they go defining?
Right now, we have three consultants, environmental consultants on our list, and we select from those. Those were determined, even prior to me coming on board. We sent out, we, I guess, request for a proposal, request for qualifications to multiple consultants. And we got feedback, we got proposals from, from consultants. And the three that we selected are, are the ones that we consider on, on the bench. And so we reach out to them, we have contracts on them, they're, they're on call. When we get a project in, we'll send that scope out to those three. And some of them may be busy, so maybe only one of them may, might respond. If only one responds, then we choose that, that consultant. If there's two or three, all of them, you know, all three of them respond, then we'll review, you know, the qualifications, their, their take, their tasks approaching the, the project. And we'll have to make a decision on, on one of the consultants.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, can I get a motion to receive and file?
I can make that motion to receive and file.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
The roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Onto comments. Any audience comments? No? Seeing none? Any written comments submitted?
No, there were no written comments submitted.
Any city staff comments?
Yes, I just want to remind the planning commission that the harassment prevention training is due this week. It's due on Thursday, eleven six. So if you haven't done it already, make sure that you do do that. The training is about an hour. And then once that's done, you can forward it over to our, I believe it's HR that would collect that. I also wanted to maybe announce, you may have noticed Rodrigo's been out for, for the last couple of weeks. It's actually good news. He had a baby, so he's on paternity leave currently, but we expect him back at the end of the month. So some good news there. I already spoke about the JB Hunt project earlier. The notice of preparation has been released. We did have the scoping meeting last week to solicit comments from the public on, on what should be included in the CEQA document. The end of the comment period is going to be November twentieth. So in about two weeks, we'll get all those comments in there. And then from there, our consultants will take over and start preparing technical reports and the environmental document. And in several months, it will, it should be coming your way. And then lastly, I wanted to just mention that we're at the end of the year. We only have three meetings left. And so we do, we did release a public hearing notice for the meeting on the eighteenth. So we will have a meeting on November eighteenth. The last two meetings after that would be December second and December sixteenth. So if you do have any concerns or you plan on going out of town, let me know about that. But we, again, we, we do plan on having that next meeting on the eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and congratulations on the baby. Let's see. Any planning commissioner comments or questions? No?
One quick question. And I think it's maybe more for direction from, I think, staff and, and the city council is, or from legal counsel is, as some of these projects start coming to the forefront, there's lobbyists and applicants to start reaching out to folks. What is the recommended process to entertaining site visits or meetings in regards to applicants? Do they, is there a formal process to go through city staff to schedule site visits for the collective commission? Or what, what is, what is the guidance that legal counsel would provide on, on that matter? Because I know in the past, there have been, I think at the last meeting, the applicant referenced that there were commissioners that were invited, but that invitation didn't go out to the rest of the.
Well, if all five of you show up to a, to a side visit, it's a planning commission meeting and it needs to be noticed. So we would of course discourage that. I think if you, if you did want to intend, you would want to make sure that there wasn't a quorum at the meeting and no more than two of you there. As we mentioned, you, 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 you don't want to create the appearance that you're necessarily endorsing the project. Because if you become too publicly associated with the, with the developer, somebody may request that you, you know, abstain from voting when, when things having to do with that development come. So I, I, I would just use your discretion. I mean, you're like, you're a decision making body. You're supposed to be neutral and not, not appear that you are either, you know, pro project or anti project until it comes before you and you get, you get, you know, all the facts and all the, the arguments from both sides.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, my, my last city, we actually would have a field trip with the planning commission in the morning. And we would have to, since all five commissioners were there, we had a quorum. So we would send out the field trip in, as part of the public hearing notice, so everybody knew. And public was invited as well. And we got to, we were able to walk the site with all the commissioners and all the, you know, residents that wanted to, to come along. In other cities, it's really up to, to the commissioners. And I would actually encourage the commission to go out there in the field and visit the site. And if you need to, maybe talk to the owner or even schedule an appointment to, to get on the, you know, the premises to be able to walk around and understand the project. I think it's important because you are the decision makers, making an important decision on, you know, a business on, on a property. And so it, it makes sense to be able to understand, you know, what's being proposed, what's being developed on the property. But as our, since the city attorney had mentioned, you do have to be, you know, aware. So you do have to be impartial when you're out there. You're really just an observer, just taking in, you know, the information. You don't want to, you know, kind of mention which side you're voting on. And you also have to be careful. I do know commissioners that go out there and they'll go in like, you know, in pairs, two at a time or so. You do want to be, be careful that there's no more than three of you out there, because then that constitutes a quorum. And then that's a violation of the Brown Act. So I would definitely encourage you to go out there, but again, be wary of, you know, who you're with and make sure that you just sort of keep your lips tight and not give any indication on if you're voting yea or nay on a project.
And what about the appearance of a serial meeting? If, if there is more than three commissioners visiting, maybe not at the same time, but at different times?
Well, as long as you're not discussing with each other, you don't, you know, get back home and call your fellow commissioners and say, oh, this is what I think about that. What do you think? You, 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 you do have the, the right to, to get as much information about the project as you can. Just don't share with the others your, your, how you propose to vote or try to, you know, solicit votes from, from the others. Should be fine.
Got it.
Yeah, and I also want to warn the commission, if you do go out there, sometimes you have applicants that want to, you know, give you a little treat or something, you know, a little bit of water or, you know, snack or something, it might be fine. But if they want to try to slip you a, you know, enclosed envelope or something, you know, to be mindful of stuff like that.
Anything can be anything, right? Any lunch, dinner, anything. So out of transparency, would it would be, so if a lobbyist contacts you, it'd be good to inform legal counsel and staff that, hey, like so and so contacted me, I'm going to go on a site visit?
I've, I've had commissioners do that. I've had commissioners disclose at the public hearing that they visited the site, they met with so and so. They may have walked, walked by the site, maybe talked to a neighbor. And I think that's perfectly fine.
But to, to his question, like the process in itself, because how, how is it that all of us get that notice?
I mean, I, I think it would be, if you get an invitation, yeah, it would be good to, to, to let John know because maybe you all got the same invitation to be there all at the same day and time. And, and that would be a problem. So I think coordinating through John's office would be.
Or maybe not all of us got it. Or maybe not all of us got it. That's what I'm trying to get.
Well, you, you, you may not, you could certainly, you could, you could get one and call John and say, hey, I've got this invitation. You know, I think it might be a good idea for all of us to go either together as a noticed public meeting or on individual basis. And then maybe, I'm about to add work for you, but maybe have, have John coordinate the individual site visits or group site visit.
And I think, and I think you might be meaning something else, like why isn't everyone getting the invitation? It's really up to the applicant if they choose to reach out to whoever they want. In ideal situation, it's everybody, right? So it's really up to them to be able to do it. There's no requirement that we tell them to outreach to each of the planning commissioners individually. So just want to let you know.
For projects that staff know that there will be some opposition or significant opposition for, would that be appropriate for staff to take a proactive measure and say, hey, maybe let's schedule a field trip for something along those lines? I mean, there are certain projects that are coming down the pipeline that we know ahead of time will be a little contentious. I mean, I just, I put it out there, this is your world, we're here as servants to the city, but I think your guidance would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, there are larger projects that are coming down the pipeline. So if you do want to maybe take an early tour on some of these, especially the ones that have, you know, EIRs or, you know, let me know. Maybe we can schedule some time with the applicant and not have all of you go at once, but maybe in smaller groups.
That would be great. Yeah, and personally, I've taken it upon myself to really just disclose that, you know, I'm here as an observer, I'm not going to be making any decisions, you know, I'm just gathering information. And I've also made it a habit to disclose just what my observations are at the meeting, just out of transparency. And so I think that's hopefully been adequate for what we're doing. But I think, I think the idea of going on as a group or smaller groups is pretty good and probably more efficient. So I would look forward to that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will be adjourning this meeting at 7:22. Thank you, everybody, for your participation and your hard work, and especially for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.